The introductory video, are we just starting? I'd like to call the November 1st, 2024 special meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us for this meeting. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance, heed the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, meaningful liberty and justice for all.
I would like to announce that anyone attending the meeting who use the county parking facility to attend the meeting or using public transit can pick up passes from security on your way out. It's valid for today only. Want to read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the commission at our meeting today. There are two items under consideration for the special meeting today. The first is under Presentations and Updates, and we have Jeremiah Leroy here to provide more information about the Disaster Recovery Consultants. Jeremiah, thanks for being here.
Good morning, Commissioners. It is wonderful to see everyone today, and I hope you're doing well. There we go. As Commissioner Newman said, I'm here to talk to you today about our Disaster Recovery Consultant Contract. Wanted to start with this recovery continuum slide. Thank you. I am vertically challenged, so thank you for that, Lilian. This is really just an opportunity to sort of visualize the sequence of interconnected activities that advance communities towards their recovery outcomes, and is intended to sort of show the interconnectedness of preparedness, response, and recovery, and that they really are all connected. And knowing that with everything coming down the pipeline, we were already going to be challenged with all this additional work, but also to continue our regular everyday operations, the county pivoted pretty quickly towards doing an RFP for disaster recovery consultant work. And that RFP really focused on the disaster recovery framework, the financial and grants side of it, and of course, pre-disaster recovery planning services. We received 20 proposals and scored all of them with an interdisciplinary team of county staff. The top three firms were interviewed and references checked. Proposal evaluation criteria, pretty straightforward, but included obviously clarity of scope, level of experience, experience with both FEMA, PA, and IA, abilities to support long-term planning and resilience, experience within the state of North Carolina, of course, and complexity of subcontracting, experience with hub subcontractors, et cetera. So just some framework on how those proposals were evaluated. The vendor that was selected was Tetra Tech. Obviously, there's a lot here about their experience. They really came out on top for us for a number of reasons. Joel or Jonathan will come and speak here in just a minute, so we have our contractor here to answer any questions you may have, but just wanted to give you, again, a little bit of a framework in terms of their overall experience and why they were selected. Initial scope of services will potentially include things such as, again, public and individual assistance, advisory services, outreach, program development, outreach assistance for our other impacted communities, our fire districts, our community-based organizations, and our schools, debris management assistance, right-of-entry, and private property debris removal is a really big issue for us and something that'll be helping us out with. Shelter, housing support services, and of course, staff augmentation. As I said, we are trying to get back to as many normal operations as we can, and so augmenting staff in areas like the EOC, the pods, et cetera, could be really valuable for us. This is what our recovery framework looks like. These recovery support functions are essentially these seven areas that we have highlighted as really high priority for the county. Debris management, economic revitalization, education, health and social services, housing, infrastructure and access, and natural and cultural resources. All of these, of course, are fed up through our volunteers, our funding, our community engagement, community-based organizations, et cetera. All of those things sort of feed up into these as well, but those are the primary recovery support functions that will be servicing our community, and this contractor will be helping in a variety of ways with many of these services. We're also exploring the option of a Blue Ribbon Committee, which is not unlike many of our boards and commissions that we have today, which is sort of a stakeholder group of individuals that would provide recommendations to the Board on certain recovery efforts. Something I did not want to forget about is just while we have the opportunity to do so, is to remember, tell folks to remember to please apply for this assistance and how to do it. There is a deadline currently of November 27th, so we really want to stress for our community that even if you weren't severely impacted by this incident, it is important to go ahead and apply for assistance. That deadline is coming up. We can request an extension on that deadline and likely will, but we still want folks to know that the number of registrations do play a role in determining how many resources ultimately come to our community. I'm sure you've heard folks say, "Well, I wasn't that impacted, and so I don't need to apply. I don't want to take money out of someone else's pocket." I've heard that from a number of different community members, and that's not really that accurate, right? Again, we need people to register because it does let the government know about the scope of the disaster, and it does impact the overall resources that'll come to us. All right. Any questions to start with? Otherwise, I'm going to turn this over to Jonathan in just a second, and you can ask him any questions you have specifically about Tetra Tech. Okay, pretty well. Jonathan?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you. My name is Jonathan Virgil. I am the Business Unit President for Tetra Tech's Disaster Recovery Business. I am a resident of Asheville, and we are one of the nation's largest disaster management consulting and technical firms in the country. I want to say, first off, I say I express my condolences for those who lost loved ones during this disaster. It's always a terrible thing when people have family members or friends that are lost, and I've been doing this for about 25 years, this business line, but it's never an enjoyable thing to see someone who's lost a loved one. You can always repair a home, but you can't bring somebody back to life, so I just want to start off with that. I wanted to let you know that this past week, I have been embedded with your emergency response and other department staff at your EOC, as well as some of my key staff, to understand the extent of the damages in the community, as well as identify support services that we can provide in the recovery, responsive recovery effort to the county and the other incorporated areas of the city, as well as your individual residents. I've been working in the industry for over 20 years now, as I've mentioned, and I've been involved in most major disasters. I want to say that I was very impressed with the organization of the passion and collaboration of your staff, as well as their working with the local, state, and federal agencies, as well as the nonprofits and other organizations that have been involved in the response effort. Again, I do this quite a bit, and I want to say that it's been a very enjoyable time last week, working with them and helping them get organized on the path forward. So, as Jeremiah mentioned, we are a full-service organization. I have about 400 people, full-time employees, that work directly for my business unit, as well as, so the company has about 28,000. We provide just about any type of support that you may need, financial reimbursement support from FEMA, helping you apply for grant dollars from FEMA for mitigation purposes down the line. As Jeremiah mentioned, those submissions for businesses and individuals for FEMA support are very important because those inquiries, the dollars that they report as damages, needs for rental assistance, and other types of assistance, all go into a database that is used once there is appropriation made by Congress for funding, for long-term recovery, for unmet needs, particularly for low-income individuals. It's very important for your constituents to apply because that data will eventually be used to apportion monies to the community to support the long-term recovery effort. We do quite a bit of work in this area, supporting our clients in identifying funding sources, and to work on submitting requests for those funds. And I think it's very likely that Buncombe County and its residents will have an opportunity to meet some of those unmet needs through those funds, and hopefully, Congress after the election will be addressing appropriations for CDBG, Community Development Grant Funds for Disasters, shortly after the election. That's what we're hoping. We insist in a number of areas, as I mentioned, financial recovery, housing assistance, rebuilding, rehabbing homes, providing trailers, RV trailers, mobile homes, what have you, managing folks that are in need of housing. We're doing that for a couple of states right now. We've assisted a number of states and local governments on rental assistance programs. You're going to be addressing, potentially, funding some funds to support local individuals in that capacity, and we may be able to support you in those areas. So, again, there's a number of things that we do. I'd be happy to answer any of the questions you have, because I could probably spend another 20 minutes discussing that, but I'm sure you have other things to do today that are more important. So I'll leave it to you to ask any questions you may have of what we may be able to assist with. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Jonathan.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, questions?
I have a question, Jonathan.
Yes.
And thank you for being here with us and for the help that you're going to support us with. So from your experience, for us to be looking at that long-term to ensure that we have a really strong recovery, what have you seen over the years with your experience? Some of the key things that really make a difference with that?
As Jeremiah mentioned, well, I've noticed that you are setting up task forces in certain key areas like economic development, housing, debris removal. I think there's six or eight different areas that you're setting up task forces, and you're being very inclusive in bringing different constituents to the table. I think that's very important to identify the unmet needs of the community. That information is very important to us to assist you in helping in the recovery effort, identifying dollars, and then, again, hopefully, meeting with your congressional delegation to support those requests for funding. There's a big push nowadays on resilience of communities. There's disasters happening every day, it seems like. If you watch the nightly news, Lester Holton Company, we are adept at identifying resources and implementing those funds. So Jeremiah mentioned a Blue Ribbon Committee. I think the quicker you move towards identifying unmet needs and articulating them to your congressional delegation, it's very important. I find that many communities focus on, "Let's get back to business," and they don't recognize there is opportunities to, with a little bit of planning and focus, to make the community stronger and more resilient. I know that there's a number of friends of mine that have been significantly damaged by this, and they don't have the financial assets or insurance to cover the things that they've lost. So the time you spend the next 30, 60, 90 days is very important. And again, we can help you through that process, and that's probably the most important thing. You're welcome.
Just, you know, this is kind of specific, but it is obviously something that's on a lot of people's minds. So on the debris removal, there have been questions that we get from constituents a lot around whether only debris will be removed from public rights of ways, or whether there can be a process to help property owners out who have a lot of debris, but where it's maybe not feasible to get it up to the public right of way. Could you speak to what the current outlook is on that?
Yes, yes. We do quite a bit of work in debris management and reimbursement. So, yes, right-of-way debris brought onto public rights of way will be paid for and removed. It's my understanding that the Army Corps of Engineers is supporting the county right now in that capacity. Private property debris removal is part of the program that can be requested and can be offered as part of the recovery effort. The question is, working with FEMA and the Corps to identify what elements of the debris on private property is eligible. We had actually a discussion with FEMA and the Corps a couple of days ago, and the discussion was, well, things from the right-of-way to the front door of your house generally eligible if it's a health and safety issue. So, and definitionally, what does health and safety mean? So, one of the things, and then the question becomes in the backyard, "Was it?" And then the question is, "Is it fenced? Is it not?" There's a lot of technical questions that get involved. So, the broad answer is yes. Removal of health and safety threats from private properties, particularly for people who don't have the financial capacity to handle it, is, can be done. So, what we, in talking with county staff, we're going to be working with Dan and your Solway staff to identify what will be allowable under that private property debris removal program. We're going to move very quickly. We're talking about setting up intake centers to have right-of-entry forms signed, as well as hold harmless agreements anytime you go on private property, and federal government's worried about getting sued. So, we'll be working on the required forms that people will have to sign at intake centers, or if they are incapacitated, maybe have a mobile center that goes out and helps them fill out these forms. At the same time and parallel, we'll work on what is eligible in terms of removal from a health and safety standpoint, and move forward very quickly to get that stuff off of people's private property.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jonathan. Thanks for your support. All right. Are there any other updates on this item? All right. All right. The next item is consideration of recovery funding reallocations, and EB Odershall is here to help us out with this item. Thanks for being with us.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good to see you all. Thank you for being here. Yes, I'm here to discuss some funding reallocation possibilities for Helene relief. As you all are well aware, there has been a great amount of devastation in the aftermath of Hurricane Helene that's impacting our community. In the aftermath, hundreds of businesses have experienced economic injury and interruptions to operations, which are greatly impacting the local workforce. The livelihoods of Buncombe County residents have been impacted by both lost employment and wages, and physical damage to their real and personal property. There are currently many programs out there that can offer assistance to our residents. Our CAPE team is sharing them daily, and I've included a list of them in the appendix of this slide. But as we all know, many of the individuals impacted by Helene will not be able to recover with insurance and FEMA assistance alone. And also, while programs exist to support businesses, many of our local businesses are still recovering from COVID-19 and cannot sustain operations without grants in the aftermath of Helene. To add on further and talk about the impact, we are now looking at some preliminary damage assessment data from across Buncombe County, which shows the structural damage to over 1,200 structures, and you can see the breadth and distance in Buncombe County and all of the impact here. For today's request, we are asking for approval to reallocate 3.194 million ARPA funds to fund initiatives in support of post-Helene relief. This will include household assistance, 2 million to be managed by a Buncombe County partner, including both grant funds and fund management costs. Also, a small business grant program, 1.1 million to be managed by a Buncombe County partner, including both grant funds and fund management costs. If approved, staff's next steps will be to identify a household assistance program partner by finalizing the scope of work and finding a partner to work with us on this program. We will also work to identify a small business partner. As part of this process, given that it is an economic development appropriation, this initiative would require a notice of public hearing. Following these steps, we will work to launch the Helene relief programs. These ARPA allocations will fund Helene relief with both household assistance and small business grants. On the ARPA reallocation, the funds that we are looking at is 3.194 million in ARPA funds that are currently allocated as match for the Completing Access to Broadband Program for the Bell South Telecommunications Project, which we looked at in September. The required match amount will be removed based upon legislation from the state. With this anticipated change, we will both be able to still have this program and be able to reallocate 3.194 million of ARPA funds towards post-Helene recovery. To get in further, here is the household support model that staff are currently looking at. For eligibility households that have experienced economic impact from Hurricane Helene will be able to apply. The usage of funds will be similar to what we did during the COVID response, meeting life essential needs such as utility bills, fuel, rent, mortgage, and other costs. For the model, the directed assistance grants would be paid to service providers, and this program would be administered by a county partner, who will screen applicants to ensure all the potential resources are exhausted, including public assistance programs and the services of our community partners. For the small business support model, we are looking to serve small businesses impacted by Hurricane Helene with fewer than 25 employees, who have the ability to demonstrate the retention or hiring of employees. We're asking that they would be able to retain those employees for six months from the grant award. All industries would be eligible to apply, and there is no specific focus for this grant program. Our focus areas would be to impact BIPOC-owned businesses, women-owned businesses, and sole proprietorships. Usage of funds for business operations tied to retaining and rehiring of employees. Currently, the model we are looking at is grants up to 5,000 for businesses that have one or more employees retained, or 2.5 for one employee retained. We will work with the fund manager to assess the current need, and these amounts can be adjusted higher if necessary based off of what we're seeing with small businesses and their needs. We're looking to have this program administered by a nonprofit partner, which will be selected through an RFP process. On our timeline, if approved, Buncombe County will release an RFP to seek nonprofit partners to manage these funds. With approval today, the RFP would open, and we would start the process for the public hearing notice. After opening today, then RFP could close on November 8th. By November 19th, we will plan to attend the regular meeting for the public hearing required for the economic development allocation, and in early December, we will be making the first anticipated awards. Again, for our next steps, we are seeking to identify a household assistance program partner, identify a small business partner. As part of this process, we will be doing a public hearing, and then launch the Helene relief programs. Today, we are asking for reallocation of your approval of reallocation of the 3.194 million ARPA funds to fund these initiatives in support of post-Helene recovery. Again, it's 2 million for the household assistance program and 1.1 for small businesses. Do you all have any questions?
I have a question about the timeline that you laid out there for the business. That's what we hear in the community is a quick need, right, that immediate need, and that went on a bit longer than what I was expecting. Is there not any way to expedite this?
I definitely echo the need for timeliness. We have heard that as well from the community. With the requirements and our funding sources, we're looking at the RFP process and the fastest we can move with that. By launching today with approval, we hope to be able to close the RFP by next Friday, and then move forward with selecting a partner as soon as we have those responses and the RFP is closed. That is the first step that we need to take after allocating these resources.
The public hearing needs to occur after the RFP selection, is that right?
Correct.
The point of it is to, okay.
Yes, it's with the allocation of the funds.
Could you put the timeline back up?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so, and is the period from November, so November 1st, the RFP will open, and we'll send out the public notice that we're going to have a public hearing for an economic development purpose. November 8th, the RFP closes, and the public hearing will be on the 19th, and we can vote to approve the funds on the 19th. We can select a nonprofit partner. So I guess one question, if we're thinking about, you know, is there an opportunity to move faster? Could we call a special meeting sooner than the 19th? If the RFP closes on the 8th, could we, you know, more promptly select a nonprofit partner, hold the hearing, and appropriate the funds?
We can look into a special meeting. We would need to make sure that we have enough time for the notice in order to make that work. But we can definitely follow up after and see when the soonest is we can move on that element of it.
Okay. I'd certainly support that. Yep, great. All right, other questions? On the individual and family household assistance, the idea is that we're likely to identify a nonprofit partner to assist with that. So I think just as we've been discussing this, there were some, you know, informal discussions about whether the county might directly administer some of those funds. So could you just share any thoughts around kind of the advantages of selecting nonprofit partner? You know, during some other similar situations we had during COVID, you know, we did do some direct, like, direct administration of support. So just what's the current thinking around? Is it, are we pretty clearly going down like the nonprofit partner model versus doing some of it in-house directly?
For the small business program management component, we are looking to do an RFP to find a nonprofit partner who can specialize in managing those funds. With the individual assistance, there is a potential option where we would be able to look into augmenting the staff, as was discussed in the Tetra Tech slides. We're still exploring that option, and so we will definitely have more information moving forward about how that could potentially work by augmenting current staff and the capacity needs that we're experiencing.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. Other questions? Okay. So in terms of the allocation, there have been some just kind of informal discussions around. I mean, there's this huge need, right, among both individuals, families, households, as well as businesses that have been impacted. And, you know, fortunately, there are a lot of resources flowing into the region above and beyond what Buncombe County's resources are. Where the city of Asheville has also made appropriations from some available funds they have that are both for household support, local business support. The Dogwood Fund has made some really significant upfront investments for these purposes as well. There's state economic development support and others as well. So in terms of this initial allocation that the county has, in terms of the relative allocation between the small business support and household support, the informal feedback I've heard from the commission is that we would like to go with like a 50/50 allocation on this initial appropriation. So I want to make sure I have the math correct on that. I believe the amount would be, if we allocate on a 50/50 equal basis, would be 1,597,053.34. So that's the amount if we do the equal allocation. So is there a motion to approve the presented changes to the COVID recovery funding awards as listed to appropriate 1,597,053.34 each to both the business, small business grant support and the household and individual assistance?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and second, further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you so much. We really appreciate all the work to pull together these efforts for how we can get some resources that we have available right now out to families and individuals and businesses who really need the support. So thank you to the county staff for helping to pull together these programs for consideration at the special meeting today. Commissioners, I believe those are all of the items that we had on our agenda for consideration today. Ms. Pender, are there any other items that we need to consider during the special meeting?
No, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.